Call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to this special meeting this Monday evening, February first. Madam Kirk, can you please call roll?
The pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Here. All right. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed into the Zoom call, use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you are calling in via phone, press the star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So we're going to move on to agenda item number one, evaluation of downtown uses. And here from is our planning manager, Saleh Mara. Did I pronounce that right?
You did. Thank you. All right. Can everyone see my screen and hear me clearly?
Looking sound great.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, Vice Mayor Bonilla and council members. My name is Saleh Mara. I am your planning manager and I also have with me virtually, of course, Rendell Busto, Senior Planner and Julia Klein, Principal Planner, to help me in answering questions a little bit later in our presentation. So with that, I will get underway. The item before you is downtown uses and a deeper dive into a request made by council back in October of 2020. I intend to cover these topics and I'll try and fly by them as efficiently as possible. So at the October nineteen twenty twenty meeting, after a brief discussion, the city council requested a study session. And the the city council in their discussion raised the possibility of exploring some near term solutions and adjustments to our city codes with respect to downtown uses. And also anticipating vacancies, particularly in the ground floor, not solely as a result of the pandemic, but certainly exacerbated by it. But at the same time, the council members also raised some caution about being too reactive to the current conditions. And and before I continue, I want to take a moment to familiarize everyone with the greater downtown and its environs. So here you see a map. I believe it's attachment one of the staff report. And this map illustrates the downtown. It's quite expansive, approximately seventy blocks. The Caltrain line divides the west from the east. A creek runs through it, specifically San Mateo Creek. And the southern edge, at the southern edge is our Central Park. If you look towards the middle of the map, those double black lines which depict our downtown core, that's where the retail frontage requirement is. And I'll get into that in a moment. So at that October nineteenth meeting, we heard from council to reach out to our stakeholders. And this preliminary effort netted valuable feedback, which I can report out to the council. I spoke with approximately eight individuals, but also the downtown San Mateo Association comprised of many, many more individuals. The comments received were to have flexibility in our design standards. This would be the depth requirement for storefronts or retail as well as the the wall length. Be open to a wider range of uses, but not medical offices. Be open to yoga and Pilates and tutoring centers. And in a moment, I'll clarify that these uses are already permitted. But there is a little bit of a procedural burden in approving them, which could be clarified and eased up. Lastly, the stakeholders also cautioned that don't react too quickly or react to respond to the pandemic only. One thing we learned in San Mateo is not too different. We aren't too different from other cities. I'll add to this on the next slide. But as I mentioned at the outset, you know, I'll walk you through attachment two with respect to the attach with respect to the allowed and conditionally allowed uses. As as I mentioned, we could tweak the code to clarify some of these definitions and perhaps even allow staff or the zoning administrator to concern consider certain uses, which again, I'll dive deeper into that. The zoning code, as I mentioned, does allow a wide range of uses throughout downtown. However, in the retail core, there are some constraints in regard to uses, i.e. financial services not being allowed in the corners. This is something that we've discussed, not only with past potential applicants, but also with with new ones and and among staff that how, you know, where did this come from? And how could this potentially be allowed? And and one way would be through design, you know, making sure that our design allows for a transparent storefront, making sure that the pedestrian realm is maintained and making sure that it is pedestrian generating uses. And and as I stated earlier, you know, we could, our code could certainly clarify some of these terms. And Rendell can can talk a little bit more to that with respect to the uses in downtown. So we can all agree that the retail industry has changed significantly and and that too, and it seems like almost in real time. The pandemic certainly hasn't helped. In fact, it's probably exacerbated that change and accelerated it. It has also affected the restaurant and beauty salon industry significantly. So much so that many of them have shuttered, not specific to downtown San Mateo, but throughout the the peninsula and and, you know, everyone who's been affected by the the pandemic. And many of these businesses will likely not reopen. So whilst considering making adjustments to our standards, specifically in downtown, we can look at our design standards to ensure that the downtown is an interesting place to walk. Lastly, in looking at a couple of neighboring cities, I can report that Palo Alto is considering changes to their downtown. I believe they initially looked at allowing some office on the ground floor in downtown. And a few years ago, Redwood City made some adjustments to their downtown precise plan that allow ground floor offices on their secondary streets. So not, certainly not Broadway, which is their retail core, but but some of the the fringe streets. So as I wrap up the staff presentation, we seek the city council's direction and guidance on the following questions. And should the city council have a desire to go through the allowed use tables that's part of your staff report? Rendell or I could certainly walk you through those and answer any clarifying questions. With that, I will conclude my presentation and I thank you and I'm certainly available for any additional questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I'll bring it to council and do, are there any council members with questions at this time? I'm not seeing all, who's that? That is Emirates, Councilmember Lee.
Hi, thank you. So I have a process question about the difference for the permitted versus the requiring special use permit. What what is, you know, can you can you help the public better understand what the procedural process is and how it's different for those two different types of permits?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Lee, and I'll I'll start, but I'll have Rendell provide some additional details, but essentially most zoning codes are set up in a way that you have uses that are that are permitted by right, where if you fall under a specific category, you're a beauty salon. And if that is listed specifically explicitly in the zoning code, it's permitted by right. If it says you need a conditional use permit or a special use permit, that usually entails a public hearing, sometimes in front of the zoning administrator and sometimes in front of the planning commission. And with that hearing, staff, the city can impose additional conditions, but also make sure you comply with what is intended for that specific zoning district by way of compatibility.
So so what it, how is it determined which kinds of permits would elevate to the planning commission versus the just a zoning administrator?
So usually you'll in a given zoning district, you'll go through a vetting process when you're when you're forming that zoning code. And what is desirous in that zoning district? So if you want pedestrian activity, you want to allow uses that promote pedestrian access. If you want more neighborhood serving uses, then you will allow those by right. And there might be a host of other range or uses that you want to consider allowing with some additional research or additional analysis. And those are the ones that are usually allowed, but with a special use permit or a conditional use permit.
And to add to that, to answer your question, Councilmember Lee, Rendell Busto, Senior Planner. One caveat to a special use permit in the downtown zone, really any zone, is that there's only a few things that staff at the zoning administration level can approve. Uses that are especially uses in the downtown have to go to planning commissions. So it's an extra layer of review.
Okay. And then I just have one more question. Do we have a sort of a hierarchy or some kind of reference to to know, to refer back to that we have gauged the market and sort of, you know, our own history in terms of how we rank, what are pedestrian generating uses?
Well, it it probably started as part of the visioning process for the downtown precise plan. I'm sure the city had consultants and city planners who came up with a vision after discussing it with council and outreach. And and if that was the goal, then there were a list of uses that the the city considered in adopting to promote that type of environment.
Okay. So but at this time, we don't have sort of a standard ranking.
Well, I I think it's it's the the list that's in your attachment too. So in the retail frontage area, there are about half a dozen uses that are promoted or encouraged, which include retail, personal service, including salons and and restaurants, eating establishments, bars and so on. Then you start getting into that gray area, which could be allowed if they meet certain standards. And lastly, you've got a range of uses that are not permitted in the core, in that retail frontage. But looking at at downtown more expansively, most of those uses are allowed in other areas of downtown. So so the one example I cited earlier was financial institutions. Those are allowed in the greater downtown area. They may be even allowed in the retail frontage. However, they cannot be in the corners. And that is something up for consideration. Should the council desire that, why don't we allow them? We can certainly look at that.
Is that all your questions, Councilmember Lee?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, Deputy Member Deputy Mayor Bonilla, I saw your hand up first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I'm reading the report and in the first paragraph under background, it says that it was brought to us in in October to think about exploring potential near term adjustments. But it also notes that this was being asked in response to what did I say here? Basically, the landlords, the owners of the properties. And so I I want to remind that our downtown has gone through different stages throughout history. There was a time where before the theater was built, it was kind of slow and sort of degrading. Then the theater got built and things really picked up. Then we went through some slower times and most recently over, I think, the last, I don't know, maybe as far as ten years back, spaces started going empty because the rents were just too darn high. That has happened. And so we need to be leery of catering to the owners of the properties as much as we need to make sure that our downtown uses are providing the kind of uses that our San Mateo residents want to frequent where they like to be and do what they want to do. We have the power to shape the land uses down there and we did this back in two thousand nine.
And Deputy Mayor, do you have questions somewhere in there?
Yeah, well, yeah, are we doing this in response to requests solely from landlords or is it? I know that the pandemic is part of it. Okay, but is the big thrust the landlord's request to change the uses?
I can I can attempt to start to answer that, Deputy Mayor. From what I heard at the proceedings that took place on October nineteenth, I I believe then Vice Mayor or then Mayor Gothols had indicated that he was approached by business owners or property owners that that asked that question and and he was simply raising that that concern.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pappen?
So I have a couple of questions. When I look at the permitted uses chart that we have, I think it was your attachment two. Was it two? It doesn't matter. The the one that lists what you can and can't have downtown.
Correct.
So I I noted that it seemed like a lot of uses were already allowed in the core area. And I'm just wondering, is that because things were grandfathered in or because like, you know, we have a lot of yoga studios and whatnot already in the core. Ben Franklin Hotel used to be in that core. So I I just wanted to know, are we doing the things that were grandfathered in or?
So we we have both and and I'll let Rendell add to this, but we do have some grandfathered uses that aren't otherwise allowed. But but we do also have uses such as yoga studios, Pilates studios, that there is a desire to promote. However, our code could use some clarifying language that explicitly calls them out. So we say gyms as an all encompassing definition and gyms could mean a twenty four hour fitness or it could mean a a yoga studio for five people. So so that type of clarification could could be beneficial for for laypeople that crack open the code and want to start a new business.
Yeah, I would agree. I would I would say that it's a combination of grandfathered uses that were allowed to continue to operate as long as they don't remain vacant for a certain amount of time and uses like SoulCycle, Core Power Yoga, the boutique fitness studios. You know, those weren't really anticipated in the code, so they don't really fit the category of a gym. And, you know, those kinds of uses also have a very predominant retail focus. And if you walk by, they look like retail stores first before a fitness studio. So there's definitely a hybridized list of uses that the code doesn't anticipate today.
So a lot of them may have gotten in because they had a certain portion that was retail?
A combination of that and, you know, it was found as a compatible use at the time they came in. So we offered some ability for those kinds of uses that weren't clearly defined.
Okay. Yeah, because my experience has been that a lot of those types of businesses do seem to generate activity, which may lead to revenue elsewhere. My next question relates to revenue generation. In particular, what does it mean for, let's say, sales tax or any other sort of tax to the city? And do we have any kind of reference, like for example, in Redwood City, when there is a yoga studio, it really generates X amount of income per square foot. So we have some idea dollar wise of what we're dealing with because I'm really interested in enhancing what would generate revenue for the city, commercial wise. So that's where I I'm driven by and that may be difficult information to garner. I just wondered if there was anything out there that maybe we could refer to.
Certainly, I'm I'm sure there is and and we can research it for you anecdotally or as a professional planner. I can tell you when when you have uses such as yoga studios, what happens is is folks come down to use the studio or they'll come ahead of time, go to a juice bar and and then go do their yoga. Afterwards, they may pick up dry cleaning or end up meeting someone for lunch. So people do tend to link trips when there are other amenities in in a downtown area. But we can, we can look to our counterparts in Redwood City or our colleagues in economic development and see if there's empirical data that that supports that.
Terrific. I think that's it on my end. Just that I saw some things already in the retail, in the core that are already there, grandfathering. And then what are we looking at general revenue generation with? Because I see the same thing. I see like there's a karate studio and a lot of parents are hanging out. Some of them will go get coffee and if it's generating activity in the downtown, I'm inclined to at least allow those parts of it. But you didn't want that yet. You were just looking for questions, Mr. Mayor. I apologize.
Thank you. And before I go back to you, Rick, I have a couple of questions, if I may. I guess I, along the same lines as Deputy Mayor Bonilla's questions in terms of the timing of this discussion, do we have an update on when it looks like we're going to get to updating the downtown area plan?
So in in the sequencing of things, it'll first be the general plan. The general plan will lay out those policies, goals and objectives, which will then in turn inform and update area plans, specific plans, the downtown plan and and the overall zoning code.
Okay, so so it's your, I I guess that question is if if this wasn't brought up by some property owners in our downtown or or a council member, would this be a discussion that we have to be having right now? Or should this be discussed more holistically when we're looking at everything at once?
So so in in the near term, you know, certainly it's a good time to have the discussion. But to look at the zoning code in the downtown precise plan holistically, it it may be more prudent to have that discussion when when the time is right, which would be after the general plan is adopted. Okay, that way we're not reacting to the current trends. But but I could certainly see us being receptive and 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 trying to be a little bit more friendly towards our property owners and and landlords.
The last question I think for me for now is that, you know, we've we've talked or or there's a lot of talk about empty storefronts. And the the missing equation here that I think Deputy Mayor Bonilla was 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 touching upon is that when you say that there's an empty storefront and it implies that there's not any demand for that that space, but the the key variable in that is the price it's being charged for rents. And I'm I'm wondering, is there any? Is there? It seems to me whenever I talk with a small business owner that rents have just gone up every single year and these property owners are benefiting tremendously from that, especially in these tough times right now, because a lot of the 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 impacts of the pandemic are being are being felt by the by the business businesses, not necessarily the property owners. I'm wondering, um, do we have any information on how much rents have increased in the last, you know, five, ten years? And and how is that playing into effect of our empty storefronts?
Sure, I can I can start answering that question, but I'll ask either Jennifer Chen or Kathy Kleinbaum to to come in after me. I I did receive a report from our economic development folks and from what I can tell in the last ten years, the trend has been rents have increased from about two and a half dollars to three and a half dollars gradually. That's that's been the trend over from from about two thousand ten to I'd say June or July of last year.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had for now. Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
My question has to do with regarding what was brought up about businesses that don't really generate much sales tax, but they generate, I guess, some other activity by attracting people downtown where they might generate some sales tax. I know that we don't have, I think, service tax, tax on services like hair salons and studio, you know, yoga studios like the Core Yoga Studio that went out of business last year after only opening a year before. And that could well have been pandemic related, but I think that we may want to explore ways that we could get some fees from these businesses because otherwise they're not really a good use of that space in terms of what the city needs to continue operating. The streets and the lights and and the whole setting there downtown costs money. We're about to spend a lot of money on a whole new parking equipment and and organization in our garages. So what do we know about, and I asked the city manager about this, maybe he can chime in. What do we know about the possibility of charging fees? Or taxes for service?
Well, we did look into this in our based on the discussions that we had, and this was not a surprise to us, but the ultimately services fall under sales and use tax, right? So it's it's still a sales tax and a sales tax is governed by the state. And so right now the it's it's the state that determines what what is eligible to be taxed. And right now it's tangible goods. Right? And so we we do not have the ability to impose or even take to the voters a a service tax locally. That would have to be something that would be done at the state level. And then in terms of fees, you know, a fee, a fee would have to be commensurate with whatever service we were providing to, you know, to the business. So I mean, obviously, we would be charging them permitting fees and and whatnot to and and business licensing to to open up their business, but we couldn't, we couldn't necessarily charge a fee that was outside of the bounds of the services that we were providing them.
You're on mute, Rick.
Sorry. Yeah, right, because we do provide services. There's downtown cleanup. There's police. There's fire. There's and all the whole, like I say, streetlights, the the gardening service, the everything that makes downtown what it is. So if we would have to go to the state to talk about, I think many other downtowns are now facing this same kind of thing happening. And there's another factor at work here. I think it's that we're suffering from the pandemic right now. We have seen the retail market go through some changes, but we're not sure where those changes are going to end up. And it's still transitioning. And so maybe we should talk to our state legislators about maybe gearing up for something that might address that lack of what be sales tax coming from those spaces.
Certainly, I think that I I can just address that briefly. There there's been talk in the in the legislature for a number of years about different ways to modernize sales tax. I mean, certainly the shift from a goods based economy to a service based economy has has done, has taken a significant toll on sales tax revenues for a number of cities because, you know, fewer tangible goods are being sold and and that money is instead going to services. So which which are not taxed. There have been a variety of of proposals over the years to to again, sort of modernize sales tax. And and they've, you know, not gotten a whole lot of traction. The last I heard about taxing sales was, I think, maybe five years ago, where they would, where the state had proposed sort of reducing the overall base sales tax, but then expanding it to include services with the benefit predominantly going to the state. And that did not go anywhere. So again, it's something we we would be happy as staff to reach out to our our local legislators to to discuss. It has been discussed, I know, and and has not gotten a lot of traction so far.
Thanks. I'd be interested in helping with that. I think maybe this year with all the other problems that we're experiencing could be the catalyst that pushes this kind of thinking forward. Because as somebody else wrote in a letter today, we need all the help we can get.
Okay, we have, we're going to go to public comment right after some questions by Councilmember Goltos.
I think my question's for Jennifer Chen, and it has to do with what Councilmember Deputy Mayor Benia just brought up. So our conversation right now, I think, is about how to reduce vacancies downtown and reduce the open storefronts as opposed to increase them. In the conversation at the DSMA regarding what Rick just brought up, is there room to tax people more, the businesses that are downtown in order to pay for their services? Or is now not the time to be doing it?
I think what the DSMA was doing the last time before the pandemic hit was that they did a study. They paid a $30,000 study to review the existing tax structure for the bid and see if there was a more equitable way of distributing it so that users like Core Power Yoga, 24 Hour Fitness and Equinix would pay a little bit more to reflect the kind of traffic that brought in. However, due to a pandemic, they never did, they never went forward with it. And and the DSMA actually cut the fees by half to support businesses throughout. And they'll probably look at if they want to do that moving forward again. But I will say, I think even the projected revenues done by the study, even increasing and redistributing it, I think the maximum amount of fees only as done by the study was about maybe 250K to maybe 300K, depending on the what type of business uses. And I think the kind of value you're seeking potentially to support sort of more infrastructure related projects has to be much bigger than that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, it looks like we have some members of the public that would like to join in the conversation. So if we can just hold the rest of the questions after the public, I'd like to open a public comment.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, our first speaker is Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and staff members. I hope to connect this conversation with the excellent conversation I think you all had this past Saturday during the Blue Skies Initiative that focused, part of it, which focused on really spending time to develop a strategic plan to revitalize our small businesses and how our city operates. I believe, yes, we should study all the areas mentioned by the planning staff and community development staff in this report. But as you said on Saturday, we have a unique opportunity to relook at what our downtown is and what does San Mateo want to be known as? By itself or with relation to other cities around the Bay Area? And I think there is certainly an opportunity to look at other study, other cities. I know that the staff talked about looking at Palo Alto and Redwood City, but there are many other cities that I know they would love to have a chance to look at. I was speaking, and this is a very biased sample of one, but to Richard Drager of Drager's supermarkets. And he made the comment to me that it was much more difficult to conduct business in San Mateo and more costly to conduct business in San Mateo than it is in Menlo Park or Los Altos. I have no idea of whether that's true or not, but the fact that it's in his head means that our sphere of influence needs to be a lot wider. I think also that we really need to look as at this as an opportunity for new types of uses. What about maker's spaces? What about different types of businesses where you put a premium on being physical? As an example, the Amazon store in Burlingame is only an opportunity for Amazon to do easier exchanges and refunds. What can we do to really have San Mateo be a place that supports different types of businesses and gets them excited? So I think this is a wonderful opportunity. I support this effort and I thank you to staff and council for taking this under consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kevin C. Kevin, please go ahead and unmute.
I think I'm muted. Councilmembers, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. This is Kevin Cullinan. I know many of you know me. I'm not only a business owner downtown San Mateo, but I own several properties in downtown. And what I wanted to comment and one of the things I wanted to speak to and specifically, I think Deputy Mayor Benia talked about some of the tax implications and some things that we need to look at in terms of what types of business we put downtown. My fear is, and this is from being on the ground and being here and being downtown, and I've been here for over 25 years, is that we need to kind of rethink and reimagine what it is we're doing and not necessarily, you know, knock down or really to refine things and and stop certain types of businesses from going in. A good example, just a real word example for you guys, is Joseph Bank was my tenant downstairs. And I moved heaven and earth to put them in downtown. And I, when I brought them in 2005, there weren't a lot of retailers downtown. It was right after when we put in the theaters. And at that time, in order to attract them, and they didn't want to go there, I had to reduce my rent. So I I significantly reduced my rent on this property to get them in. And what I did in return for that was I had it be conditioned on some sort of revenue generating sharing on the backend, which they were able to get to. Unfortunately, their sales started plummeting, probably right around 2013, 14. And they continued to plummet all the way up to this last year. Their last year, their lease was this year. They were going to be leaving whether or not the the COVID virus hit. And that's unfortunate. And I would have been probably struggling and trying to figure out who I was going to put in downstairs. And that's what kind of propelled me to start looking at other options for the building, which is when I found out from my space downstairs that I couldn't put a financial institution in on the corner, which is one of the things we're going to be working on right now with an application to the city. So the bottom line is, as far as revenues are concerned, when you look at this, their revenues were were plummeting, real word. I I think they're at the heights, just to give you an example, they were doing about a million and a half a year down there. I think last year, or not, I'm not going to use 2020, obviously, but 2019, I think they did about 700,000 in sales. So I don't know if it's realistic, and this is one of the things I want you guys to be mindful of when you start reviewing and researching this. I don't know if it's realistic for us to think in terms of retail, how it used to be, because it's not going to be the way it was. So please be mindful of that. And I'm happy to share any of this information I have. And again, I'm I'm boots on the ground, happy to talk to you guys anytime, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is B Street Books.
Hi, hey, thank you for allowing me to speak. Mayor Rodriguez and council members, I first off want to say I really appreciate what you guys do for this city. And I'm a proud, I'm proud to be a part of it. So I came to downtown San Mateo in 2009 at the, you know, sort of the, sort of the end of what was some pretty bad times. We we managed to go in the old thrifty and just had a chunk of it. There were pigeons flying around and it was kind of a mess. But we established a sort of a toehold. And then when the corner spot opened up at Third and B, we managed to sign a lease there where we've been for 10 years. I I really looked around at a lot of different cities before I made the choice to to go to downtown San Mateo. I really like the feel and the look of downtown. I think a lot of CEOs have chosen for their upstairs offices downtown San Mateo because of the amenities that the city has to offer. You know, the transportation, the restaurants and interesting things for their employees to do. I say we need more retail, we can't really dictate what goes in. But in response to some of Deputy Mayor Bonilla's comments, I really liked the idea of possibly trying to work out some kind of arrangement where we could buy down the cost of some of these rents so that we could get the type of retail we'd really like to have, you know? I don't think any restaurant downtown wants to be next to a dental office. So our downtown is really unique. And and I think, you know, the DSMA has been trying to sell it as that, you know, as a restaurant destination. And, you know, maybe in the future that will have to change. But I think a lot of the restaurants will come back as we come out of this mess. And I just want to say that I think we need to kind of stay the course and not knee jerk react to what the present situation is showing us. As Jennifer Chen commented, we have a lot of, we have tried to make our fees more equitable and generate a little more income to help with some of the things we do downtown. And in the future, I hope we can revisit that when, again, we get out of this mess. You know, I I could talk further and I'm sure I will have the opportunity in the future, and I thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no other speakers.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? And I see Councilmember Goltos hand up.
So my only comment is that I hope that we can be somewhat flexible in the short term to try to reduce our vacancies. I I don't, I I do think it takes long term planning in order to create a downtown that we want. But right now, I think we just need to make sure that it survives. So with that, my recommendation would be that we give a little bit more flexibility to the zoning administrator. But I I don't know that we're done getting feedback from the stakeholders. I really think that the businesses downtown who who are there, who understand the situation better than we do, need to be heard. And I I don't know that we've heard enough of those voices, but I'd like to see us help our downtown survive.
Thank you, Councilmember Goltos. One of the things I should have done was have, see if we can have that slide come up with all the different areas of of feedback that you were looking for. And also, while you're doing that, I'll just add to Councilmember Goltos' statement that when we're talking about stakeholders, we're also talking about our community as well, our our residents and what they want in their downtown too. It's just not about the businesses and and the property owners, at least in my opinion. Are we going to bring up that slide, if that's possible? Just to make sure we're getting you all the information you wanted from us? Perfect. All right. Okay, I guess we'll we'll come back to Councilmember Goltos if he wants to comment on these. But Deputy Member, Deputy Mayor Bonilla, how about you go now? I think you might be on mute. Do we, where do you go? I think we might have lost Deputy Member, Deputy Mayor Bonilla. Does anybody else want to go while he's getting back on?
I'm going to just leave it unmuted. So I want to say first, I do agree that we need to do a study of downtown uses and see if we can do, and as Councilmember Goltos just said, be somewhat flexible in the short term, right? I think that there may be ways we can do that without effect major change. But we have to study and see, and I'm totally in favor of that. Aside from that, though, I know that downtown is like the heart of San Mateo after what was Hillsdale Mall and that heart's in the the ICU right now. But we need to be very careful. This is something that should be done with a thoughtful process through the general plan. And because changes can be damaging, this is not something you want to come back to three or four or five years from now and have to redo. I think that we need to set some parameters around it that say that, well, when we do a general plan, we're going to study it, and those will be actual final changes. Okay, well, whatever we do now, maybe some temporary changes, just to deal with temporary conditions. I've been speaking with Mr. Cohen, among other people downtown. And like I said earlier, I think the rents have been just too darn high. And I don't know what we can do about that, but we should try and do something with that. I think in talks with the owners. Because downtown is more than the owners, it's to the general public about the shops and the people that work there, the shop owners themselves. What services and goods are available and and how the people interact with that? And we serve the people. So like you said, Mr. Mayor, we should not lose sight of that. So going on to the list, certain use categories on which staff could concentrate or avoid. You see, this is the thing, if you let different uses come in, it may work out really great for them and they may not want to leave after some period of time when we do our general plan, say that we really don't want those uses there on a continuing basis, if we do that, right? I don't know. Regarding analyzing potential changes, locational requirements for uses like financial institutions, you know, I was here, I was at all those meetings back in 2009 when it was determined that we didn't really necessarily want other big banks taking up landmark corners that are fine retail locations. Banks already have good locations downtown and in other parts of the city. And I think if there were maybe some other kinds of uses for those car, I think Joseph Banks was a great user. I'm really sorry to hear that they had such a difficult time. And Kevin knows, I bought all of my suits and formal wear there. It was a great place. So it's hard to say on that. I think we need study to decide that. Should staff analyze potential changes to design standards that stakeholders, and stakeholders include a lot of people, place constraints on ground floor development? I think that we need to be careful because, like Lou said, I don't think a coffee shop wants to be next to a dentist's office. And I think insurance store uses don't really belong downtown or even even accountants. These are really backroom kind of operations that we have room on the periphery of downtown. You'll notice the dark lines are the only areas on the map affected by this downtown storefront policy. So I have an insurance company, it's right outside of the dark lines. And I think we try and, we need to try and be careful and respectful of what's working and what isn't. There are some things that are working. And should we look at ways to streamline the permit process? And we should always look at that, okay? Especially as it applies to downtown, but anywhere in in any business the city does, we should be looking for ways to streamline. That doesn't mean that we're not charging for things we need to charge, but we can make it simpler and quicker and easier to get there. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Councilmember.
The historian. The historic character downtown is very valuable and I think the conversations that's going on right now around the Ben Franklin Hotel. Points that out. Okay, we need to be careful with what changes and uses we allow there because it can be. Very damaging to the overall character of downtown. Thanks.
Councilmember Pappen.
Forgive me if this was pointed out, but I don't recall anybody saying, what is the vacancy rate? Downtown? Do we know? Either in the core or in the perimeter?
So I can answer that. So we've been tracking since COVID started and because downtown is so big, we've just been sort of manually managing this. There's, in the downtown core is about forty-eight blocks with thirty properties currently having some kind of storefront empty. So that means about, there's about on any given block in the core, there's about one point six storefronts empty. There's a concentration of storefronts along Third Avenue with the Ravelry, the former Joseph Banks store, the. One eighty on Third, which is the Aaron Brothers' former site. As well as the Joe Soli's properties right on sixty-third Avenue, which is like the Sky Lounge and the former photography. Spot. I, I think the issues are those buildings have bigger storefronts and harder to fill in general, or they have some. Anticipated development and they're just holding on temporarily.
So do you have some percentage there, Jennifer?
So. I, the percentage itself is a, because we don't have a exact net of the total square feet.
Okay, I could see then how it would be difficult. I'm just trying to get a ballpark.
Right, but I, I, again, like, that, like, most of the, there's about one point six storefronts on any given block.
Okay, okay. So my feeling is I think there has been a fair amount of flexibility. I can appreciate wanting to stay somewhat flexible during. Stressful times, but I think there has been. That's why I asked the question about where some of these businesses grandfathered in. Because it doesn't seem to me the restrictions that are there aren't. Doesn't seem like they've been completely followed. So I think there has been that flexibility, which I think is a good thing. For me, I look at it. With the lens of what would a business generate for the city revenue wise? And I know that probably gets us more to the, to the sales tax revenue. And it's difficult to quantify a business that brings in activity and, and to maybe a surrounding location. But I, I do see it, I witness it. That's not particularly a scientific observation, but I know that there are certain businesses that do draw people into downtown. So I can appreciate wanting to be methodical and I think that the general plan is probably the best place to do a lot of this. My observation is there has been some flexibility. I don't see blocks and blocks that are vacant. And I am driven, as I said, by what will generate revenue and slash activity that generates revenue. And that's how I would look at it as we go forward.
Great, Councilmember Lee.
So I think that, you know, I think that my, my addition here to this conversation is that. I, I feel really concerned at this point about one point six storefronts. Vacant per block. You know, there's, there's sort of a domino effect that can happen when, when storefronts start closing. And, and I think that, you know, when we talk about being a resilient community. And being flexible and responsive to community need in times of crisis like this. This is the time to start looking at solutions in the short term and also in the long term. And I, and I think that, you know, that approach is very appropriate, given the circumstances that we're in. And the opportunities that I, you know, that I see. Really important are, you know, the clarification streamlined, streamlining of our procedures. So identifying, you know, where there, where it makes sense to do a zoning administrator versus the planning commission. And, and look for also the use clarifications for those instances of hybrids and, and then also for financial services. I've heard from the community and I've also spoken to Lou. That, you know, there are some hard lines that, that I, I don't think there's any appetite for, certainly not for me. I don't think that in the core, we want to have hospitals. Or, or medical or dental clinics. So I think that there are concentrated categories of businesses or use cases. Use types that are, are flat inappropriate for the core. But I also think that, that there are many opportunities on the margins to, to expand the list. And create greater flexibility and efficiencies. So that we can weather the storm and get through it. And I agree, long-term, it makes perfect sense for this to be folded into the general plan process. So. I mean, I think I pretty much answered the questions.
Thank you. All right. So I have a list of comments. They're, they're kind of all over the place, but I want to make sure I get them in. So first off. I tend to agree with Councilmember Pappen that if we're going to really look at this holistically, we are, in, in look at all the different impacts. We really need to do it holistically through the, the general plan process. My fear is that when we talk about quote unquote, short-term solutions or temporary changes. A lot of times, especially when we're talking about kind of use changes. These temporary changes can, can quickly become long-term changes that are impossible to claw back if we ever wanted to. All of our economic consultants that we hire, talk, that are helping us with the general plan are telling us that this COVID situation. Is going to be short-term and when we look long-term, things are going to bounce back. So I'm, I'm very concerned that. Things that might look like temporary changes that are kind of try to make the situation better in the next six months could end up being very long-term changes. I think that nobody wants empty storefronts. But I, I think that before we, we make. Changes that are hard, that are kind of irreversible in some cases. I think we really need to dig deeper into the underlying causes, as I kind of alluded to in my questions. And we need to look at how rents have been increased because if I'm a property owner downtown and I, and I'm asked what type of uses do I want to allow? Of course, I want the, the tenants that were willing to pay the most money. I, I think that, I think we also need to look at the structure of the leases because not only is e-commerce changed retail, but I think especially now. The trend towards, or the, the, the old trend towards long leases. And long options, I think is, is becoming a little bit obsolete, especially now in the short term when tenants are. More, they are more, are uncomfortable signing long-term leases. So we need to look into that. I also found it interesting that the cities that we were looking at, Burlingame, Palo Alto, Redwood City, and I'm not sure about South San Francisco, but they all seem to have P bids. If we are going to be looking at changes that could perhaps increase the property values. Of, of our downtown, I think we also need to look at that as part of a situ, as part of the overall. Like picture and perhaps compromise, in my opinion. I also liked an, an idea that, that Councilmember Lee brought up in terms of. Trying to quantify like what we're looking for in terms of like what active, what different uses bring different activity levels and things like that. And perhaps we can add that to Councilmember Pappen's ideas on, on kind of like revenue because, you know, there might be a, a use that brings in more revenue. And there might be a use that brings in a lot more people and we probably want a mix of those. And that is why I think we need to look at this holistically and we also, I'll just reiterate, we need to talk with the neighborhoods. We need to talk with the residents to see what types of uses they want. That's all my, that's all my comments. Thanks. Does the staff feel like they have enough direction or is there anything else? And then we'll go to Deputy Mayor Bonilla after.
We, we certainly do. Mayor Rodriguez, thank you very much for your time and the council's time on this.
Okay, closing comments, Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Yeah, thank you. In terms of, you know, like you just mentioned, kind of trying to design the mix of uses on. You know, I guess different blocks or, you know, in certain areas. I know that we learned over on Thirty First Avenue, some. Handful of years or more ago, when it seemed as though it was nail shop after nail shop after nail shop coming in there. Right next to each other and people asked questions about that and we were told that, well, there's nothing we can do about that. You know, those leases are private arrangements between landlords and tenants. And so we need to be careful about that. We don't have that kind of control, so. It's better to have broad overall design about what uses and. We also, at the time back in two thousand and nine, we allowed for some uses in the back of deep. What had previously been deep retail spaces from when people actually stocked a lot of materials there at the store. Like a shoe store would have a huge deep inventory in the back. No more. Now everybody uses, you know. Order it as you need it kind of delivery services. And so we actually set, and I forget exactly what it was, the retail space could be, I think. Up to, well, a business that chose to could actually put in a second storefront door and a corridor. Going down the side of the main storefront business to a different. Businesses not allowed as an on-retail street use, like an office. And we have some of those, but not a lot. There is flexibility, as Diane says, we have been flexible over the years. And some uses that were kind of grandfathered in are still there. So. Those are just some thoughts. I, I think it's okay to study this and think about it and look at what we might be able to do, but I think the general consensus that I'm hearing about. Referring to the general plan for an actual real downtown plan is the best thing to do. Thanks.
Great. Okay, with that, it looks like staff has what they need and we're going to move on to the next item. It's a cybersecurity report by Information Technology Director Pete Owen.
Hello, I will go ahead and start my presentation.
Thank you.
Share my screen. Well, can I assume everyone can see and it can hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Pete Owen and I'm the IT Director for the city. I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this report on cybersecurity efforts at the city. This study session is prompted in part by a San Mateo County grand jury report released last fall entitled. Ransomware: It is not enough to think you are protected. In November, you approved a response letter to the grand jury. And there was also interest in this topic from the city manager's office, so here we are. Next slide. Our agenda today includes a brief review of the grand jury's findings and recommendations. A look at some of the cybersecurity risks we face. A review of our approach to cybersecurity, which is based on a federal framework. Some examples of types of attacks and responsive measures. And we'll close with a few additional considerations. It is a big topic, but I will do my best to keep this brief. So the grand jury made eight findings emphasizing the threat of ransomware and the importance of cybersecurity plans and protection. They had four recommendations, which can be summarized as have your IT department do an assessment. Address any shortcomings and report back to you. In our response letter, the city agreed with all eight findings and committed to addressing these recommendations. And this study session and the accompanying written informational report are some of the final steps in the process. Other steps include seeking assistance from the Department of Homeland Security. And on this front, we have requested services and been receiving rudimentary security scans from the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, or CISA. And we're looking forward to more CISA services as they're made available. We've also assessed our cyber, cybersecurity approach and are taking additional member, uh, measures as warranted. Here are the specific concerns emphasized by the grand jury. The IT department here does have measures in place to address each of these items. Quickly, we deploy modern firewalls and anti-malware software. We segment the city's network. We have strong password policies. We patch and update all systems. Our backup system is very modern, maintains multiple versions kept in two locations, one of which is in the cloud. We test recovery from backups. We have email filtering in our Office 365 email system. We provide security awareness training to all users emphasizing phishing. And we have a trouble reporting system. A strong cybersecurity program goes beyond this list, though, as we'll see. The grand jury report and my written report accompanying this session define some terms. Like cybersecurity, malware, phishing, ransomware. There are also many other types of cyber attacks in addition to phishing. I'll just list them. SQL injection, man in the middle, distributed denial of service, drive-bys, supply chain compromise. And there are many types of malware in addition to ransomware. I won't list all of them for you. And here we see a dashboard of cybersecurity threat activity from another partner, the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center. And it shows some top malware variants and some other data. I will emphasize that the cybersecurity risks are indeed real. Cyber attacks are in the news and many agencies have fallen victim. Recently, you may have heard of the SolarWinds Orion supply chain compromise, which hijacked the tools IT professionals use to manage systems. And it is one of the worst cyber attacks in US history. Where happened to not use that SolarWinds Orion tool here at the city, luckily. The scale is vast. Global losses from cybercrime were nearly one trillion dollars in two thousand and twenty, according to a report. From the Center for Strategic and International Studies. This is almost double what it was in two thousand and eighteen. I want to emphasize the impacts are not just ransom payments. There are opportunity cost, system downtime, loss of trust, intellectual property theft, and most notably incident response and recovery costs. Attacks on government agencies can also have implications to public assets and infrastructure. And the reality is no organization is completely safe, even with strong technical defenses. So in San Mateo, we base our approach on guidance from the Center for Internet Security or CIS. This is an organization of security professionals who've repackaged the federal cybersecurity framework into a more friendly format that's easier to follow. The framework has twenty controls organized in three groups, as you see here. And these are described in the written report accompanying this session. Organizations are categorized into groups. There's three groups. We fit squarely into what's called implementation group two or medium-sized. So the thing to remember is the federal NIST framework is the standard and the CIS controls provide us a guiding process. And my key message today overall is that a successful cyber defense requires. A comprehensive program of effective city policies and governance. Strong technical defenses, of course, and appropriate actions by people. It is not simply technical defenses. Now I'd like to highlight just some examples of attacks and how we defend ourselves. As we know, phishing targets victims with email that appears to be legitimate and that asks for information. It's often your user account and password. It can also be your social security number or credit card numbers. A couple of variations of phishing you may have heard of, spear phishing targets a user with personal information the hacker already has. And wailing, which targets or impersonates an executive like, say, a council member. Phishing is typically just a means to an end. Here's an example of an email from a hacker masquerading as Microsoft and the goal is to trick the user into entering. Credentials into a fake site. And once they own your account, they try to use it. Here's a report of failed login attempts on City of San Mateo accounts. This shows that hackers are, as we say, tapping on the glass from all over the world trying to access our accounts. And the good news is these are failed attempts. And one reason these attempts fail is multi-factor authentication or. And one reason these attempts fail is multi factor authentication or MFA. MFA requires a user to enter a secondary password when accessing their account from a new device. MFA is a technical defense, but it is also a policy. The IT department can enable it, but the organization has to agree to use it. We also require complex passwords, which expire after ninety days, and this item was called out by the grand jury report, because yes, people use very work weak passwords, as you can see, like one, two, three, four, five, six, or worse. Email filtering was also called out by the grand jury. Here we have a snapshot of a security dashboard from our Office three sixty five email system showing malware and phishing attempts that were blocked by the system in a period of seven days. Attempts to hack end user accounts are a good segue into social engineering. Uh, in a cybersecurity context, social engineering is manipulating someone into performing actions in a system or divulging sensitive information. In this example, I show a hacked account being used to find more victims and do more damage. This is a compromised account impersonating a colleague and attempts to trick the victim into changing vendor payment information in the financial system to a hack hacker's bank account. This is a real example with redaction, of course. A compromised account might instead impersonate an executive and ask the employee to provide gift cards using agency money. We may have heard of that. Um, then there's the lost and found trick, where attackers just drop a USB stick out in public, playing on Good Samaritan impulses. When someone plugs that USB into a computer, malware gets delivered. So protections in this area are more than technical defenses. Uh, while email filtering can block some phishing and malware, uh, and we can auto scan USB devices as they're plugged in. It's also about user education, city policies and practices. The cybersecurity awareness training we provide is regularly updated with quality content, but organizations must also employ certain guardrail policies and practices that might include a policy and practice to independently verify any change to electronic funds transfer accounts and not to do so through an email thread. On the topic of ransomware, uh, there are many types, or three types at least, but um they all have the effect of making files or systems unavailable. In some cases, the attacker threatens not to destroy, but to release information that is sensitive, damaging or embarrassing. It's important to note that even if a ransom is paid, it's likely the data is not recoverable. So the more likely cost and expense is rebuilding systems. Um, for the sake of time, I'll be quick on a few of these slides. Um, we do counteract with virus malware protection. Uh, we do have, um, as I said, the more likely thing is to have to do recovery of files. Our backup recovery strategy does, it is a modern um system that exceeds anything that was talked about by the grand jury. We can talk more about that if you have questions. Um, we have other protective measures, such as, um, as I mentioned, our PCs are kept up to date with anti malware and updates of operating systems. We do have a remote management, monitoring and management tool for that, and there's a dashboard here to just to show you a look of that. We also monitor all of our systems and networks. Um, on this other dashboard, you can see that. Um, I want to say we apply all kinds of sensors that go much deeper into health than just up down status. We it practically tells us if there's problems much deeper into a system. As a result, by the time we get a call from a user, we typically are already working on the problem. Just one or two more slides. Um, I would like to take one moment to talk about a recent enhancement to our technical defenses, and and this is a big one for us. In our cyber assessment, one area which needed attention was um, it's referred to as just analysis of logs and events generated by applications and network devices. Uh, the work to organize, analyze that data is very resource intensive and requires highly specialized skills. And for an IT department of our size, it's difficult to have those kind of resources around. So we've implemented um very recently Managed Detection and Response, or MDR. Um, you can see from this graphic, it connects to all kinds of systems. It collects the data, it organizes, analyzes, um, gives us metrics and brings the data together in a way that's actionable for us. And what's distinguishing about MDR is its proactive threat hunting and mitigation. When a problem's discovered, MDR immediately can disconnect a suspected malware infected computer from the network. And in addition, they give us access to um dedicated cybersecurity experts who help us respond to incidents and improve our planning. So it's a very significant uh addition, and it's a significant gap that we filled. So I'll leave you with this last few uh thoughts. Um, overall, I want to say there's no magic bullets. Cybersecurity has to be collaborative and collective, and as we like to say, our end users are our best defense. Um, there are some things we're thinking about, um, continuing to focus on cybersecurity awareness training, perhaps expanding it. We'd like to see a more and encouraging adoption of the cloud tools that we provide for storing files and for applications. Uh, it's much better than using onsite file servers, much more secure, and there's a one terabyte of storage per user in our account. Uh, we'd like to be sure that cybersecurity is a key consideration when collaborating with departments on the acquisition of new technology of any kind. And we'll be exploring enhanced policies and standards and continuing to leverage our partners. So again, my overall message, uh, trying to be brief, is that this is more than technical defenses. It's also a program of policies, governance and actions that we all take together. And with that, uh, I am happy to end my slideshow and try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Pete. I'll bring it back to council. Do we have any questions? I'm not seeing any questions. Um, do we have any attendees that might want to?
No, Mr. Mayor, they've all escaped.
Okay, we avoid them. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to council, close public comment, bring it back to council. Do we have any closing comments?
Thank you very much, Pete, for the very comprehensive uh report. It sounds like we have a great program of protection, detection and correction. Uh, really much more involved than I could ever imagine, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I will just add that, you know, this is one of these things where you never get kudos until something happens, and then you are the the goat, and I really um appreciate all that you're doing to protect our our city, because it would be a disaster for us, and so we're glad that you're at the at the at the top of the defense lines uh helping us out here. So thank you very much. Okay, um, we are gonna move on to the next item. Moving right along, and um this is gonna be moving in the close closed session. If there's anybody in the member, any member of public, and it looks like we have, we don't have any, uh, that want to comment on this, uh, before we go in, please speak now, forever hold your peace. I'm guessing that.
Do we have to dial in to another number?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Just sent to Microsoft Teams.
Okay, so we're gonna see everybody. Oh, so I'm gonna close public comment, we're gonna go to Teams. See everybody.